Testing, we're starting our meeting at 7:00 PM.
It starts.
All right. Tonight's meeting is for the conduct of town business by the town board. The public is invited to participate at any time marked on the agenda. Public comment during that segment of the meeting. If you have a question or comment for the supervisor, please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. Please state your full name. Limit your remarks to three minutes. Thank you for anticipated cooperation. So today is a federal holiday, so all our employees are off today. So you could see our town clerk's not here, but we do have our police chief here. Thank you, Jerry. And we do have our budget officer here, Christine Pulliam. Thank you for coming. So this is a public hearing for the 2023 preliminary budget, October 10th, 2022, 7:00 PM. I'm going to keep the public hearing open right now, and then we're going to move forward for our first meeting of the month, October 10th, 2022, 7:00 PM. And at this time, I'd like to call for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And please remain standing for a moment of silence for all those men and women who sacrificed their lives to give us the right to stand here today, to serve our country, to serve our state, and to serve our town. Thank you. Yes, I did. This all signed? Okay, good.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I need the motion approved again.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Motion to approve the September 26, 22, 22's town board minutes. Need a motion?
I have one comment on that.
Yes.
As absentee in those minutes, it says absentee is Eddie Mano Nelly. That's incorrect. Should be Manuel Calvi.
Okay, we will make note of that, and I'll have her change it. It says Eddie instead of Manny.
I'll make that motion to approve the... Well, I wasn't here, so.
You can't make that motion.
I should also approve the minutes from September 26th, and with the amendment of Manny being not absent, I was actually here.
I have a second for that.
I'll second that.
All in favor? And thank you. So moved. Authorized the payment of bills of $346,767.35. I need a motion to pay the bills.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I'll second it.
All in favor? All right, so moved. Okay, any comments on the agenda? Anyone? No comments on the agenda. We're going to go right into 2023 preliminary budget hearing comments, and this is the public hearing part of our meeting. So if anybody has questions, even if it's a board member, our budget officer, Christina Pulliam, is here to answer questions. If not, we will close the public hearing. Going once. Twice. Okay. Since there's no one here and no one's asking any comments, I'm going to make a motion that we close the public hearing for the 2023 preliminary budget, public hearing.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. So moved. Chris, you're dismissed. And thank you for all your work. You guys, I know you know this already, but Chris spends hours and hours and hours going through this, and I go in her office every other day and bug her to change something. So I just want to say publicly, thank you, Christina, for all you do and keeping us on a level field and making sure our budget's right and especially our audits. So thank you.
Thank you, Chris. All right.
All right. Good night. So going right into reports, then. Supervisor report, October 2022, held one-on-one budget meetings with department heads to discuss the 2023 budget to get feedback on what items each department may need so we could budget appropriately, met individually with each town board member to discuss the 2023 budget, had multiple meetings with Budget Officer Christina Pulliam on the 2023 budget. You'll see that's the theme of this month, a lot of budget meetings. Attended the Town of Marlborough Annual Community Day hosted by the Marlborough PBA and chaired by Chief Kokosa. Jerry, thanks again for what you do. Great job. Great, great job. It was a very successful day. Thank you all that participated and donated, especially thanks to the PBA and the Marlborough Milton Fire Departments for their contributions toward the food and cooking all the hamburgers and hot dogs. Thank you to Tom Corcoran and Penny Cashman for the building department, dispatcher Jen Van Amberg, Daniel Cherabini, and Dare Officer Kurt Fulton for all their help and participation. And thank you to Brooklyn Bottling for donating seltzer and juice beverages, and T.O. Miller for allowing us to use their box truck to keep all their food, all our food refrigerated. So thank you to everybody. Great day. We got great weather and a good turnout, so good job. Attended the Ulster County Town Supervisor Mayor's Monthly Meeting at the Municipal Center in Marble Town, New York. We had a good discussion, all the supervisors and mayors, about basically budgets, and we went over a lot of numbers as far as comparisons. And as I talked to you guys during budget time, that's where I came up with a lot of our raises and based off a lot of what we talked about in that meeting. Met with town employees to discuss needed improvements at the Milton Landing Pier in preparation for ACL cruise first dock, and attendees were Gail Upper Jr., Councilman Zambito, John Alangi, Gary Lazaroff, Mike Scotorro, and Charlie Majeo. And these guys were instrumental in actually achieving ACL to be able to dock that day. So I just want to thank each one of them individually for all they've done, and I know what they're going to continue to do. So thank you to all you guys for doing that. And then attended the Milton Landing South Pier, the first cruise docking ceremony with American Cruise Line. In attendance was Eric DeSault from ALC, Deputy Supervisor Appeler, past and present town board members, all department heads, Rosemary Wine, and many of the town employees from all departments. It was an historic day for the Town of Marlborough and for the Hammond of Milton. And I know I'll speak for all of us, it was an historic day with something to come down Dock Road and actually see that ship docked there. It really made you say wow when you first came down the road, and everything went off without a hitch, and it's been going pretty good. So thank you to everyone that got us to that point. And again, we're going to go in the future. We're going to get other cruise ships, and it's going to be great. So I had a conference call with Nathan Norkowski from Travelers Insurance and the town pier engineer, Brandy Nelson, about the north pier claim. The insurance company authorized the payment for the engineer cost of $19,950 for the evaluation of the pier damage and assessment of the repair cost. They already sent us that check, and we received it, so that can get paid out as they bill us. And now the claim has been handed over to Travelers Major Case Unit Representative, Janie Lenock. And I talked to her last week, and so they're going to send down a builder inspector, I guess, from their company, and Gail is going to meet with them, I believe tomorrow, to go over any questions they may have with the pier. This is standard practice. They're going to, it's a major claim for this pier. We're not also just asking for the claim itself, but since now it's out of compliance, we're asking for it to be upgraded to ADA compliance. So there's an actual extra cost in that. So we'll see how that turns out. Met with town engineer Phil Bell, and the contractors go over the schedule for the Tomback renovation project. So everybody hasn't seen any progress up there. There has been lines put in the ground. There's been some dig safes been called in, you see that. But tomorrow, knock on something, tomorrow they're supposed to start moving forward with the main project. All the bonds have been in place. We have them, I have them on my desk, I have them certified, so everything is in place at this point. So hopefully tomorrow we'll see some action. Met with Erickson and Michael Madison from the county Emergency Service Department with Deputy Supervisor Appeler and Chief Kokosa and Tina Rosa to review our town emergency management plan. And this was from an earlier meeting we had in the year, and Everett and Michael gave us some suggestions, and they helped us with some of the questions we had from their suggestions. And I know Tina and Gail and Jerry and myself are moving forward on updating this plan, so a lot of good suggestions by them. Met with the school superintendent, Michael Riddell, and Roseanne Malli and Chief Kokosa to discuss the shared service agreement contract for the school resource officers. So our contract's going to be coming up next year, ending. But in our contract, I'm not sure if every board member realizes, there's a car allowance in there and for two cars, and we charge them per hour up to a certain amount of hours to reimburse us for a car. And as everybody knows, cars went up significantly. So we told them that, and we gave them the new number, and we talked about contract extension because we don't have a contract past the next year with the police department, so we can't actually give them a physical number. So we're going to put some verbiage in there to say that their contract's going to be based solely on the police contract. So we're moving forward that. We're trying to get the money that we need. And also some of the other stuff that when they call us in for SROs and for certain assignments that aren't in the contract, we need to get reimbursed for those. So they agreed to doing that, too. So it was a good meeting. And that was my report, Supervisor Corcoran for the Town of Marlborough. All right. So the next one is building inspector, monthly report, building department, month, September 22, certificate occupancy three, request for information seventeen, trailer park renewal zero, building extension is twelve, fire inspection is nineteen, stop work orders one, order of remedy three, complaints sixteen, burn permits issued eleven, total mileage 1,566, total gas usage ninety-eight gallons. Building permits additions and renovations three, barns one, built burning eleven, carpet and garage two, deck repairs two, demolition three, electrical HVAC three, furnace boiler one, mobile home one, pool hot tub one, roofs five, sheds two, blasting one, single family four, solar panels two, tank installs removal one, and pellet stoves two. Total permits forty-five, estimated cost of building $2,277,277. Fees collected certificate of occupancy $450, permit extensions $4,820, building permits $12,070.80, request for information $3,400, total building fees $20,740.80. Fire inspections $1,220 for total fees of $1,220. Burning fees forty-five, total fees for the month $22,580. And Jerry, do you want to do your report?
Activity, is this on? Activity summary for the month of September 2022. Personal injury auto accident six, fatal zero, property damage accidents twenty for a total of twenty-six for the month. Vehicle and traffic summons is issued sixty-eight with no parking violations. Bladder entries nine hundred and eleven with twenty-two total arrests for the month. Telephone calls handled 1,857 telephone calls. Overtime for the month, part and full time, overtime's attached, dispatchers part-time, eight hours, full time sixty-eight point five hours. Police mileage for the month 10,459 miles with a fuel consumption of 834.906 gallons. We did have two use of force on deer that we had to fill out forms for. No civilian complaints for the month. Respectfully me.
So Jerry, I'll bring this up tonight because we're going to have, we're going to have a follow-up meeting, but I spoke with you or text you multiple times yesterday about our traffic issue on Latin Town Road. I know everybody's off today, but I'm going to request tomorrow that you, myself, Councilman Zambito, my brother Tom in the building department, meet with weed orchard representatives to go over the traffic issues that we're seeing up there. Ever since 2020, we've always had issues, but ever since after COVID, it's got extremely out of control.
So what I understand, and I believe they'll be able to better fill us in, they sell the tickets online now. So I think the max out is 5,000, and that's all they can handle there. When they reach that 5,000 number, they stop letting people into the place, but they direct them north to the sunny, Sunny Hollow Flower Farm or whatever their other farm is called, and then they bust them back.
Off of Latin Town and Old Indian, right, on the corner?
And they bust them back. The problem is, they stopped them at Mount Zion and Latin Town Road, and every single person has to have a conversation which backs up Latin Town Road to the problems we had Saturday, that I spoke with Councilwoman Sesson, and then Sunday I spoke with Supervisor about. Definitely worth a meeting with them. I just don't know what we can do.
Well, they do have a site plan.
Well, that's, that's important to have time there.
And if we have to see what that site plan says, so that's going to be what we're going to pull tomorrow and see what their site plan has to say.
Can I ask a question, Jerry?
Sure.
You mentioned 5,000 is the limit?
I was told they sell 5,000 tickets for the day.
5,000 tickets is ridiculously high.
This is what I'm told. Now, they'll be able to verify that, but this is what I'm...
Well, that's why we got to talk to them and find out, because 5,000 tickets could be 10,000 people. If it's Carlos, I don't know how they're selling the tickets.
It's just 5,000 tickets.
I know, it's a lot of money. I mean, it's a lot of people. Again, we all know this goes on every year with the pick your own. It's getting more and more and more. And again, ever since COVID, it's even got worse. But we have to have a plan, they have to have a plan that's better than what currently is going on. And if it's them having to get more security and more officers...
I don't know if that's the answer, because how do you control the traffic on Latin Town Road? Even if you had a dozen cops there, the traffic is still coming in.
Maybe you can't sell 5,000 tickets. I don't know if that's the number.
Occupancy could be the problem, correct?
So again, you have a site plan for a certain occupancy. We have to see what that number is.
What's that? Right. Oh, they accommodate the cars there to a certain point, and that's not the problem. Once, when they're flowing into the Mount Zion spot, that's not the problem. It's the second they shut down that lot that it all backs up on Latin Town, because everybody stops at Mount Zion Road thinking they're going in there.
Right.
And then they need to be explained to as to how to drive up, and that all takes time, and it builds up fast. And then north and southbound traffic just can't flow. There's no place for it to go.
No, we got to come up with a better solution. And look, we want, we want them to prosper. We want them to have a great business, and they do, and they bring in a lot of tourists into our community. It's a great scenario for everybody, but those people that live on Mount Zion and Latin Town and other people that are trying to get to their homes or do other things, it's becoming an issue that's getting unsustainable. So at this point, there has to be some kind of a meeting, and there has to be some kind of a working schedule here, how we figure this out. I don't know how we're going to do that, but we're going to sit down and try to do that. Again, it's nothing against them because it's, means they're having a great business, right? They're doing a great job promoting it. But at the end of the day, there are other people that live around that farm, and we do have to be cognizant of their rights. I don't like to get a text message from another councilman that a landowner has to go through the orchard to get to their house. That, to me, is now to the point where we have to do something. So we will address it, and we'll see what we can find out.
Saturday and Sunday, just two days. Yeah, the weekends. Yeah, I'm not even sure if they're open during the week, but if they are, it's an insignificant amount of people. But it's not, it's not just remained to them. I mean, they're the most prominent in that section of town, but when Ken's have their pick-your-own, North Street becomes a problem, not to the extent that they are. DuBois Farms, thank God it's not in our town, has a very similar problem because they're just as popular, but that's...
Up there, did you see how they handle them any differently?
They don't. It's exactly the only benefit to DuBois is they can come in two directions.
Right.
So here, it's, it's landlocked, landlocked. It's roadlocked. They can only come in one way.
On the side where they park, they have one property pass for the parking, so they can clear. But the parking's not...
They didn't set them like a roundabout there so the people weren't stopped.
It's what he said.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure there's things they can do. Whether they're willing to do them is another question. Oh, no. As far as I know, it's just grass fields. That's what they park in now. There's nothing more than that.
They have a thing to just turn, people just turn around and stop.
Yeah. Because what happens basically is they get bottlenecked on Mount Zion and Latin Town because they're not allowed on Mount Zion. They actually take the cop that they hire. They do hire at least an officer every weekend. They take him from the lot or the entrance where he is, and they put him on Latin Town and Mount Zion, and they tell the people they can't come in anymore.
But every time you stop, a call gets back to you.
Yes, yes. They have their own people that do that. We're just there mainly at the main gate for security purposes, and then we take over traffic when it gets the way it gets on Latin Town. But the reason it gets that way is because they stop letting them in Mount Zion Road.
And try to send them up to the...
Correct. And every, you know, and trying to explain to all walks of life that they need to drive another mile and a half up the road and make a left is very difficult and time consuming. And, you know, you have hundreds of cars showing up at the same time. That backs up Latin Town right to Poticles, and then all the, all the local traffic can't get through. They're stuck in that lot, and that's what happens.
All right.
Totally understand it, and I totally agree, but just not 100% sure what the resolution is.
We don't know what it is either.
And there's more than one of us. We get frustrated, we go in the oncoming traffic lane.
I get it.
And lay on the horn because we feel that it's our town, and we're not going to put up with the city traffic.
Happens every weekend.
It's not the right thing to do, but it happened three times this weekend.
Yes.
And two of the people that did it actually called me, admitted that they did it.
Oh, yeah.
It's going to cause it. Somebody's going to get killed.
There were multiple face-to-face arguments with the officer on the scene on Saturday.
We got two issues, Jerry.
But understanding their frustration, as did the officer, thank goodness.
Right.
But no, I agree. The local traffic should not have to tolerate that.
But you are correct. What can you do about it?
I'm not sure.
Well, we're going to talk about it. I don't know.
See if we can figure out a better plan, that's for sure.
There's always light at the end of the rainbow.
This is true.
That's right.
It was a disaster.
Got to talk it out. Oh, yeah, it goes away, but...
And again, the 5,000 ticket thing is I heard in conversation with people. It hasn't come from the source. The weeds can verify if they're willing to share exactly what it is that they're doing. But going back to what the building inspector's been complaining about, it's not just a farm anymore. You've got a brewery or a winery there, there's certain food. I don't know if everybody's even showing up to pick up apples or pumpkins or whatever else they're selling. So maybe that needs to be looked at. I don't know, but...
Again, they got a great business going right now, which is great for them. There's two main issues I'm very concerned about. Number one, road rage and someone doing something they shouldn't. And number two is emergency access to the site, or, you know, God forbid something happens, because I know this weekend there was an emergency there.
There was a two-year-old.
Two-year-old. So, you know, when you have these backups on these back roads, it's going to cause issues, and God forbid someone gets killed, and we don't want that. So we want to nip it in the bud now before it gets even worse, if we can.
The Indians did make it in the scene without a problem. However, it did drive the wrong way against traffic to get to the Mount Zion.
Yeah, I mean, look.
Yeah, I agree.
We'll have a conversation. We'll see what we can figure out. It's all we could do.
Absolutely.
So...
One, one last thing, that's what we're going to do tonight. I know I talked to Supervisor Corcoran about it. We are applying for a body-worn camera grant. The state came out with all kinds of money, the great governor, and they made it extremely easy. They're calling it a bundle package. I just need to tell them how many bundles I want. That bundle's worth $2,000. So that'll get us body-worn cameras now. It won't sustain the program in the future. So we're trying to figure out the number of cameras we want that we could sustain moving forward, because if I ask for 60 cameras, I can get 60 cameras. Of course. The problem is, it's about $1,000 a camera moving forward.
So just so you know, they give you the cameras in the first year's cloud service. After that, you have to figure out how you store all this camera. So either you got to do it through the cloud, which is a lot of money, or...
About $1,000 a year per...
Per camera, or you got to get an in-house hard drive to keep them on. So we'll, we'll figure something out. That's for evidence. It's the reason why you do it. You got to keep it for a certain amount of time. It's evidence.
If, if the video is evidentiary in any way or results in an arrest, there's retention periods, and arrest detention is permanent. So that means we pay for that.
So that's why it's...
As time goes on, we use more and more storage. Yes, there's deletions, and there's automatic purging and stuff, but as time goes on, and that's the problem with a lot of the camera companies, it's all cloud storage. And currently, I have a meeting set up with Axon to get exact numbers. But the way I understand it, and based on the grant information, it's about $1,000 a year moving forward for licensing and storage for each user.
For each user.
Right. So we have 25 people that we want cameras for. If we pull the trigger and ask for 25 cameras, we'll get them. But how do I sustain that moving forward at $25,000 a year?
And it's not going to, it's probably going to go up, too.
And it probably will go up as time goes up. That's what I...
Let me ask you a question. We get to a budget where we can't do it, and we just don't do it. What happens?
It's a contract, right? I'm sure, I'm sure there's a minimum usage term for the cameras, especially if the state's paying for it. I haven't seen that yet, and I haven't seen any documentation that says there's a usage term, but I'm assuming like every other grant, there is. So anyway, just know that we're going to be applying. We don't know for how many cameras.
I told Joey, Jerry, to move ahead just to get the information. Let's see what it costs, see if there's any stipulations in the cameras. Like you said, after a year, do we have to, can we idle them if we don't have the money? Or can we...
They're moving that way.
That's the, the way we might want to go, because we could buy like a 10 terabyte, hard drive to hold them on, and then we could self-purge. It's just a lot more manual intensive.
Not, no. No, we wouldn't get 25 cameras. That's based on what I'm looking at.
I mean, it's a good thing. The only thing is, once you have them, they do become evidence, right? So with the new bail reform laws, every little thing is evidence, and if you don't supply it, the whole case could get kicked out for that one thing if you don't have it. So there's another side to it. If you do use them, and for God forbid you don't have that...
My original plan was to get each officer their own assigned camera, and then it's set up electronically in the, in the programming.
There's two sides. It's a good thing and it's a bad thing, depending on how you, if you keep the story.
It's assigned that officer, it's done. Doesn't work that way when you have to share cameras. At the end of your tour, you need to go in and download that video in categories as your video, whether it was a traffic stop or whatever, but as yours. And then I can take that camera, go out and put it on and go on duty. At the end of my shift, I take that same camera, carry it, and make it mine. And we have to do that if we share it economically. But I'll get all the numbers, and I'll share that with at least the supervisor in the beginning, and we'll figure it from there.
All right. Thank you, Jerry. Appreciate it.
Scott, going back, when, when does that meeting tomorrow with the weeds?
The one down at the pier? What was it, 2 o'clock? I forget. Oh, I don't know yet. I haven't scheduled it. I have to tomorrow send out an email to our department heads and Tina to schedule it for us. So it depends on getting the weeds here.
I like to be part of that.
But... No, 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 no. It's not going to be one of those. No. I just, I, we got to have a, a sit-down, see if we could come up with a solution, right? I mean, I'm sure if we put all our heads together, we could figure it out, but there needs to be a solution, so.
I remember when we had the rodeo, we had a solution, everything, and she just didn't abide by it.
No, I think, I think, you know, they've, they've tried to do their best. They've gotten security, they've gotten officers, they've gotten, they've tried their best. I think it's just getting even too big for them at this point. I think it's just getting even too big for them at this point. Um, so maybe with, uh, the chief there and, uh, and I know Dave wanted to be involved and whoever we get there, maybe we could put our heads together and come up with a solution that works. I'm not saying it's gonna work, but you know, you have to try. You have to try, right? So that's what we're gonna try to do. So I'll let you know when we're having it. So we're only allowed to have two board members though there. So that's the thing. So, um, but I'll let you know when we're having it and if we have two of us, then I'll update the board on what we, uh, discuss. All right? Okay. So I got Superintendent of Highway, Town of Marlboro, John Alangi, monthly report for September twenty twenty-two. This month, we installed four hundred and eighty feet of eighteen-inch ADS pipe and six new catch basins to close the open ditch along Ridge Road. Also at the intersection of Ridge Road and Ridgeview Lane, we installed a hundred and forty-five feet of fifteen-inch ADS pipe. At Young's Field, we closed a ditch line using thirty-two feet of twelve-inch ADS pipe and we also removed two ash trees located in the parking lot. On nine eight, we assisted the Bella Seal Coaten with hauling sixty-six point six zero tons of blacktop to Hudson Terrace to fix the road after water main break. Our yearly rental on a crack sealer enabled us to repair numerous cracks in our roadways. We had a crew on this project for two weeks. We spent two days loading tires for the recycling of the landfill. We also sent two men to work in the town park, removing flower pots and raising communication lines so that the trucks could pass under them. We did our yearly repainting of the catch basins locations throughout the town. On nine twenty-seven, we assisted the water department installing a water line at the Milton Landing for the cruise ships. We spent numerous days working at the landing, preparing the dock for the cruise ships and installing milling, millings at the parking lot and, uh, creating a new walkway. On nine twenty-eight, we attended the ribbon cutting ceremony that we felt honored to be, have been part of. This is a great new addition to our community. Uh, fuel usage, gas, one, a hundred and nineteen point seven oh nine gallons, diesel, one thousand three hundred and twenty-eight point one four nine gallons. Respectfully submitted, John Alangi, Highway Superintendent, and he's absolutely right. Uh, those guys did a lot of work for us and, uh, uh, we, I know everybody on this board appreciates what they did. And I sent you guys the pictures of the walkway that they finished up this weekend. Uh, came out really, really good. So I wanna thank, um, Mike and Donnie for doing that for us and, um, unbelievable job. And, and I, I said it down at the thing, but Gary Lazaroff, we can't thank him enough. So he's unbelievable, that guy. Uh.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
The catch bases, you might know this, Scott, cause I, John's not here. They put white things. That's so the snowplow can see it, right? The white arrows to show where the catch bases are. They're on the road right now.
Yeah, so when they have to go clear out.
Yes, with the, with the, yeah. During the snow tossing, that's what it's for. I was wondering why they didn't wipe when the snow.
Well, I think, yeah, aren't they GPS now too?
They are on GPS.
Yeah.
But they did paint them white.
Yes.
Yeah. I never understood why they painted a different color of white when the snow.
I think white is the only color you can, yellow, paint yellow on roads or gas.
Right.
Who's the water?
Yeah, white is mark out. Yeah.
So white's just a mark out color? That's why?
Cause you really can't, well, I, I have a catch base on my house kitchen. You can't see the alley anymore, boy. It smells.
All right.
That's the only question.
Thank you. Uh, Water Superintendent, Town of Marlboro, Charlie Majayo, uh, date ten eleven twenty-two. Town Board, Town Clerk, uh, and Supervisor Corcoran, monthly report for September. Water consumption totaled sixteen point two zero three million gallons, which is a daily usage of five hundred and forty thousand one hundred compared to last month, eighteen point three one nine million gallons, which is daily usage of five hundred and ninety thousand nine hundred and thirty-five. Compared to a year ago, water consumption was sixteen point eight five zero million gallons for the month, which is a daily usage of five hundred and sixty-one thousand six hundred and sixty-six. Summary for the month, curb boxes, we had to repair two curb boxes on Reservoir Road. Hydrants, we had to rebuild the hydrant on Dock Road. Meters, eight meters had to be replaced on Ridge Road due to water pressure fluctuation because of water main break. Service lines, two service lines had to be repaired for Hudson Terrace and Orange Street. Water main, we had to perform two one-inch water taps for New House, uh, one on Green Tree Lane and one on African Lane with the help of the Highway Department. Train station, install the one-inch service line from the train station to New Dock, which will help, with the help of the Highway Department. Uh, sewer line inspections, one, service line inspections, two, closings, five, markouts, forty, gallons of gas, two hundred. Mileage for the month, fifteen hundred and ninety gallons. And again, thank you for them putting the water line in down at the pier. Uh, we wouldn't be able to do it without them. So thank you. Uh, Town Clerks' monthly report, uh, September first, twenty twenty-two to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Building Department burn permits, one for fifteen dollars. Conservation, nineteen for a hundred and eighty-six dollars. Uh, uh, dog licenses, female sprayed fourteen for seventy, female unsprayed, one for ten, male neutered, eleven for fifty, male unneutered, two for twenty. Uh, water services, uh, two for three thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars. Road cut fees, two for seven hundred dollars. TS punch carts, twenty-six for sixteen hundred and sixty dollars. Marriage license fees, six for a hundred and five dollars. Building fee, uh, Building Department fees, seventeen thousand four hundred and forty-eight dollars and forty-two cents. Fire fees in Building Department, one for seven hundred and fifty dollars. Accident reports, twelve for sixty. Certified copies, five for a hundred. Clerks' fees, one for twenty-five. Foil requests, three for thirteen dollars and seventy-five cents. Total local share submitted, twenty-five thousand three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twenty-six cents. Non-local revenue, three thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars and ninety-one cents. That's from the Town Clerk, Colleen Corcoran. Water Quality Management Inc., October seventh, twenty twenty-two. For the month of September twenty twenty-two, both the Marlboro Milton Water Treatment Plants compiled with all the S P D E S requirements. The following's our monthly stat, statistics for both plants. Marlboro Waste Water Treatment Plant, average daily flow, eighty-three thousand gallons per day, about forty-seven percent of design capacity. Average BOD removal is ninety-six percent. Average suspended solids removal, ninety-four percent. Milton Waste Water Treatment Plant, average daily flow, twenty-eight thousand gallons per day, about fifty percent of design capacity. Average BOD removal, eighty, uh, ninety-eight percent. Average suspended solids removal, ninety-four percent. Both the Marlboro Milton Treatment Plants operated normally during the month of September without any major changes or events. The results of mercury at the Marlboro were two point five NGLs. I have still not received the DEC report for our yearly inspection. We are still waiting on the fleet pump in service for our EQ pump at Milton. At the end of this month, we will no longer need to chlorinate the Marlboro facility. Overall, both wastewater treatment plants are in good work and order but are getting older. If you need any additional information, please do not hesitate to contact me. Thank you. Julian Falco, Water Quality Management. Thank you, Julian. Okay. Town of Marlboro Dog Control, Andrew McKee, Dog Control Officer, Saturday, October first, twenty twenty-two. September twenty twenty-two, monthly report for nine one to nine thirty of twenty twenty-two. Overview, we, we received a total of sixteen calls this month, including two calls of service from the New York State Police and Ulster County Sheriff. Responded to two active complaints and/or cases which are now closed or resolved. We currently have two open cases or complaints. We impounded zero dogs this month. No appearance tickets were issued this month. There were no dog bites reported this month. We have no dangerous dog cases in progress at the Marlboro Justice Court. How, Halloween is approaching. Hundreds of masked children roaming the neighborhoods, entering yards, looking for candy. Please have Halloween planned for your dogs. If you are taking children out trick-or-treating, please leave your dog at home. It is a scary, unfamiliar environment for them and does not aid them for socializing skills. And thank you. End of report, Andrew McKee. That's actually very good advice. And I didn't think about that, but that's very good advice. And, uh, Assessor's Office, Eddie, here it is.
Oh my god.
Cindy Hilbert, October Report. We prepared three tax estimates. We proposed thirty-nine sales this month. Several of the sales were transfers into trust or life estates. We have also contacted the Attorney's Office to get copies of these documents. We have several outstanding sales to process because we are waiting on supporting documents from the county. We mailed out all the agricultural, nonprofit disability and senior age exemptions, renewals. The cutoff deadline of submission is March first, twenty twenty-three. We've begun processing our splits and mergers from the planning board applications. We are going to start collecting our new construction and all our new building permits for next year. For submitted, Cindy Hilbert. Town of Marlboro Planning Board Review, September twenty twenty-two. Application fees, six hundred dollars. September escrow fees, thirteen thousand three hundred and forty-seven dollars and sixty-nine cents. Uh, twenty twenty-two recreation fees for September two thousand. September twenty-two invoices, fifteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty-three cents. Meeting September fifth, twenty twenty-two. Meeting was canceled. Next deadline, Friday, September ninth, twenty twenty-two. Next scheduled meeting, Monday, September nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Meeting on September nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Attendees were Chris Brand, Steve Clark, Cindy Landzada, James Garofalo, and Steve Jennison. Agenda, approval of stenographer minutes from eight one twenty-two and eight fifteen twenty twenty-two. Approval of the above minutes were granted unanimously. River Vista Drive, Chris Corner and nine River Vista Drive Marlboro Public Hearing Lot Line. Public hearing was opened. However, the board determined that applicant did not adequately notify the public of scheduled hearing. The applicant will be re-notice of the public hearing will continue at the October seventeenth, twenty twenty-two meeting. The board authorized attorney to prepare a resolution of approval to be voted on at this meeting, barring any significant input from the public. Lighthouse Holdings, one thirty-one, Ottawa Road, Marlboro, final site plan. The board determined that the project was unable to receive final approval due to previously unforeseen conflicts from, found in the section one fifty-five dash one C of the Marlboro Town Code and definitions in sections of recyclable agricultural buildings. Further evaluation will be made by the applicant's representatives and the board's legal counsel. Jeff Aldridge, one thirty-two, Milton Turnpike, final site plan. The board unanimously approves both secret negative declarations and notice of determination of non-significance of conditional final approval for this project. Depending upon final approval, Ulster County Health Department for the sub-surface sanitary sewer disposal system, the board also approved two thousand in recreation fees. Matt Batter, Baker Tail, five seventy-eight, Route forty-four fifty-five, Marlboro Sketch Site Plan. The applicant returned after first appearing before the board in December of twenty twenty-one. The new changes to their plans include crease parking area, new subsurface sanitary sewer disposable system, dumpster enclosures, sidewalks and ramps. Variances received from the Town Marlboro ZBA were received on May twelfth, twenty twenty-two. The board discussed the newly proposed parking area. The board also declared its intent for a lead agency with the New York State DOT and Ulster County Health Department listed as involved agencies. Deborah Tronsolito, eighty-nine, Western Avenue, Marlboro Sketch Lot Line. The applicant proposed to remove a lot line between two parcels in the common ownership to address a, uh, oh my god, approach of an accessory use of the lots. The results of the lot will be one point six five plus or minus in size. No new construction was proposed. The board unanimously approved the application via resolution. Next deadline, Friday, September twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. Next scheduled meeting, Monday, October third, twenty twenty-two. Respectfully submitted, Chris Brand, Chairman of the Town Planning Board. All right. That's all our department heads. So Recreation Committee, Sharida, you wanna talk about your trunk or treat?
Yes. The Recreation Committee is meeting for its monthly meeting, uh, tomorrow at Bricks at seven o'clock. Um, so that's a public meeting. Anyone is welcome to join. The next major event that we have coming up is the trunk or treat on October twenty-ninth. That's Saturday, three thirty to five thirty at the town park. Um, we are still in need of additional trunks. So if anyone in the community would like to participate in that, it's a super fun event and the kids really enjoy it, but it only works if people volunteer to sign up and host a trunk. So we're definitely in need of probably fifteen to twenty more trunks. Um, so please spread the word on that one. Also, if you cannot host a trunk but would still like to contribute, we would really appreciate candy donations. Um, for the, the kind folks that do host a trunk, it's a bit of a financial undertaking to provide enough candy for everyone that comes through. So we accept donations all month long and supplement what any one individual has to bring on their own. So lots of ways to get involved. Um, and that is the same day as the Meet Me in Marlboro Trick or Treat in the Hamlet of Marlboro. So lots of opportunities for the kids to get out in the community and trick or treat safely. Uh, beyond that, uh, coming down the pike, there will be a couple of holiday events happening that we'll hope to announce officially soon, but the Hamlet of Milton tree lighting will be coming up in early December, followed by a brand new event, which I'm not going to unveil just yet.
All right. Thank you. And you could drop off those candies at the town hall entrance or at, uh, Supply Captain in the Hamlet of Marlboro. So any, uh, candy donations is surely accepted would be great. Uh, Emergency Management Partners Committee, I talked about it, that we met with Everett and Michael and Jerry and myself, and we're working on that. Uh, Conservation Advisor Committee, I got no, uh, emails or correspondence from the CAC. IT Committee, I don't know if Jerry wants to touch on this, about the park installation of, uh, our internet. I don't know if, uh, I know we got the schedule for the.
So the pavilion's up and running and, uh, I have signs that I put up that dictate what the public accesses to that internet or Wi-Fi. Uh, our cameras are online, a private network. Uh, there is a private network that is available not to the public. If certain people wish to have that, I can make that information available. The reason we kept this private network private is so that the cameras have enough bandwidth to punch properly. But in the event that we need the private network, I have those, those sensors available. Uh, but the public one will be a public kind of sign and they can have unlimited access to internet. Uh, we did install the antennas. It goes, um, from the pavilion to the stage in one direction or in the three sixty. So from the pavilion up the hill is about as far as the stage is away and the three sixty. So that works well. And then, um.
How many carry cameras do you?
The pavilion has nine and the garage by the playground has five. Uh, and the, and the garage by the playground is scheduled for the thirty-first.
Yeah, it's the thirty-first. Yep.
To have that, um, internet system installed so that we can get those cameras on. We will not be, I don't think we will be putting Wi-Fi there. That's a conversation we have in the future, but at right now, no Wi-Fi at, at the playground side of the park. Um, just basically for the camera access.
Yeah, we'll see. We could possibly do it, but we'll, we'll see how far it would reach. But yeah, we'll think about it. All right. Well, thanks. And thanks, Jerry, for keeping up on that because I know you kept emailing Franco.
Yeah, you emailed also the Wi-Fi.
The what? I didn't hear.
The Wi-Fi network, the equipment.
Oh, yes. From, uh, so Danny, our IT rep, Danny Brooks.
Alpha Tech.
Alpha Tech. He donated, um, not just his time and service, but, uh, equipment to get that Wi-Fi access there, the antenna. So, uh, yes, we wanna thank Danny and, uh, his team for taking care of us as always, but also he's always willing to donate to the Town of Marlboro. As a Marlboro resident, he's always busting my chops about keeping the budget down. So I said, well, if you wanna keep it down, you have to donate some stuff. So, so he actually did. So, uh, thank you, Danny, and thank you, Brian, for always keeping us rolling. So, uh, yes, Alpha Tech, if anybody needs Alpha Tech, I would recommend them, uh.
Actually referred them to somebody the other day.
There you go. Anybody needs them out there, Alpha Tech. Look them up. Um, Marlboro Economic Development Committee, I have no report. The Milton Landing Citizen Committee, which I missed there. Um, I just wanna say about the Milton Landing, like I said, Mike and Donnie, thanks for doing the walkway, but also thanks to Councilman Zambito for all his work down there, uh, donating his time and, uh, a lot of time, putting that riprap rock around the edges. It looks awesome. And, uh, I know he's got a lot more work to do, but I thank you, Dave. So, uh, Milton Train Station Foundation. I do have a letter from the Milton Train Staus, from Train Station Foundation. We talked about, I'm asking them to clean out the freight room, um, for possibly, uh, use, for public use. And they, they had some concerns, which are valid. So I'm gonna read this, uh, from the Milton Train Station Foundation. To Supervisor Corcoran, the Town Board, we have been told that the Marl, uh, Town of Marlboro wishes to use the train station freight room as a venue for public events. This would appear to be impossible given the room's present lack of code legal, uh, exits, exit lighting and emergency lighting. The ceiling lighting that has been installed was to replicate the earliest form of lighting and many may not be adequate for public events. In the past, the Milton Train Station Foundation has been asked if the freight room could be used for the theater or display events as a theater and seating would actually have a negative effect on emergency exiting. As an art display, the existing lighting would totally be inadequate. Additionally, the freight room lacks heating, air conditioning or ventilation. However, there are greater life safety concerns we would like to bring to your attention. The passengers' waiting room has a current certificate occupancy displayed, which permits seventy people to be present in the room. There is no separate certificate occupancy for the freight room. We do not believe that is likely or possible that one can be obtained if the freight room current configuration. The freight room has one swing door that leads back to the passenger room. It is understanding that door would be disqualified as an exit because there are steps in the path of travel by exiting. There's also two extremely heavy sliding freight doors in the freight room, which are original to the building. Neither sliding door is code compliant as an exit. A legal exit has to swing. It can't roll. Their non-compliance is not merely technical, but both are a hundred and forty years old, along with their rolling hardware. And both have on more than one occasion fallen off their tracks, broken their tracks or the roller mechanisms. Both rolling doors have been made operational as they were designed to be a hundred and forty years ago. For security, both have been equipped. For security, both have been equipped, padlocked in the interior. The wood used in construction of the building is now a hundred and forty years old, as we saw in the last April fifth and in eighteen eighty-nine structure home, and town was completely lost to fire in fifteen minutes. We at the foundation have the same fear for the town's nationally registered historic site. Our town is blessed to have such a piece of history. It is not difficult to imagine the casualties which could occur should a fire block access to the door between the passenger room and the freight room during an event of the freight room. However, should a fire occur under similar circumstances in the passenger room, the entire crowd could exit in a minute directly to the outdoors through the four exits in the passenger room. The access of egress and from the freight room, as well of the two freight decks, are not compliance with American with Disability Act A D A, which is codified in New York State Construction Codes. We at the foundation have done our best to make sure the passenger room and toilets are accessible to all. We would need another ten years plus to make that assurance about the freight room index. This is why the freight room does not have certificate occupancy. There may be other issues as well that a full facility survey report might identify. However, we are offer the above items to the Town of Marlboro for consideration, and this is respectfully submitted, John Scott, who is the president, and Peter Hoffman, who is a board member. A lot of valid reasons, and a lot of them we actually knew about and know about, and obviously we wouldn't be renting out the freight room unless it was A D A compliant and fire code up to dated. That would be things we would have to invest in. So my main concern right now is cleaning it out. So we are working on that, and then the next step would be to get it up to compliance if we chose to use it for a venue for rent. But very valid reasons that they wrote this letter. So thank you for them. Do you guys have any questions on that? Okay. Meet Me in Marlboro. So Meet Me in Marlboro, as Sharida said that, my picture's not coming up, but they are having their trick or treat on the twenty-ninth in the Hamlet, which they do every year. But also, I just want to mention on Saturday, November nineteenth, I don't know why it keeps doing it, keeps going away. They're having their twelfth annual Holiday Extravaganza and Thanksgiving Farmers Market. It's Saturday, November nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, ten a.m. to four p.m. in the Marlboro Elementary School, and this is hosted by Meet Me in Marlboro. They do it every year. It's a really good event. So if anybody's interested, and again, on the twenty-ninth, there'll be trick or treating in the Hamlet of Marlboro, and then our recreational committee will be having trunk or treat in the park this year. So a lot of good things going on. Hamlet and the Milton Association Committee, no, no report, and Transfer Station Review Committee, no report. Tombback Rehabilitation Update on Old Business, as I stated, tomorrow, you should see some action. If we don't see some action, I will have some telephone calls to make again to our contractor, but I should see some action tomorrow. New business, anybody got any new business? Nope. Okay, so correspondence. This one's hard to read because they got the symbol right on top of it, but I got one from the Boy Scouts of America, PAC seventy-three. Town of Marlboro Supervisor and Town Board Trustees, Cub Scout PAC seventy-three, using the Cluit-Chans-Murra Park Facilities for the weekend of October fourteenth through the sixteenth for our last campout of the season. Will be using the pavilion and the kitchen facilities, possibly including the barbecue grill, but we will let Tom Schroeder know, starting at five p.m. Friday and ending approximately ten a.m. Sunday morning. I am writing you this letter to request waiver of the three hundred dollar resident fee that is normally requested for the use of the pavilion and facilities. We very much appreciate your consideration of this request, and that's Tara Joy Noto, and that's the Boy Scouts of America. So I would need a motion to waive the fee.
I'll make that motion to waive the fees.
And I have a second, so hold in favor. Aye, so moved. And the only other thing I want to bring up is Dan and Mary Beth King did come to my office this past week. I mentioned this to you guys before, that they were considering donating the garages that are down by the dog park at the Sands Avenue property, and they have agreed to move forward with that. So I have got some work to do ahead of me here. I'm going to probably ask the board once I decide to hire Patty Brooks to do the surveying. Of course, they're going to donate this, but they don't want to expend any money, which I completely understand. So I will get estimates of what these things are going to cost, talking to our assessor, and figuring out a little sliver of property, how much tax credit they get, and it would be a good addition to our Sands Avenue Park because we need storage down there, and they have a three bay garage just sitting right there. So it actually works out for both parties. So just to give you guys an update, I'll let you know more as we get towards the actual survey and the cost. Okay. That's all I have for correspondence. We got any public comments out there? Anybody? Anybody? Okay. No public comments, so I'm going to go right into Resolution eighty-three to accept an application for a towing license. So just to give background on here, I don't know if Jerry wants to give a background, like people come off our towing license and then other people kind of come on our license. So if Jerry wants to give one quick lowdown of what this is about, so everybody knows.
Yeah, so we have a list, and by the town code, it holds eight tow companies. Who vacated?
The mobile station that vacated. Matt's?
Somebody, oh, Matt. Matt's towing sold to another company.
You bet I was dialed in on that.
That's good. Good room. Matt's tow company sold to another company who did not want to be on the list. They would have had to reapply, which vacated a section on the list. Nicky D's Towing put an application in, he was next on the list. There were some issues with the location. He's going to occupy the same location that Autos by Joseph occupies on nine W, only he'll be in a separate, that separate garage building that's on that property, and they will co-share the fenced-in impound yard. There were some problems with the application and some issues with the zoning. He has sent straightened those out. One problem in the application was they both had the exact same address, so similar to what we did here in the building, they're making it same address, suite one, suite two, very similar to what we did here, so it separates the identification of the two businesses on that location.
What type of businesses is that?
Nicky D's, it's towing and recovery.
I thought you had to have a separate, like we, a mechanic or something.
No, no, there's no requirement for you to have a mechanic on, but you do need to have staff that can release the car from there and stuff like that.
Somebody has to be at least nine to five stations.
Or at least available to respond immediately, yes.
Because we have the same problem with these.
Yep, 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 and it's been very good for a long time. This is, their setup is going to be very similar, somewhat similar in terms of the impound yard to what absolutely automotive, absolutely auto body does with A K V. The major difference down there is they each have their own building with a separate street address, a totally different address. This will have the same address, but they're going to be using suite one, suite two, but they will share the impound yard there, much like they share the impound yard down south.
They will have two separate buildings where they're vehicle free out.
Correct.
So if this Nicky D starts housing his truck in the same building that Joey Autos by Joseph does, that's not right.
Correct, they have two separate buildings that they have.
But I'm saying he can't even use the other building. He's got to be his own building.
Yes, and yes, and that would be a violation of the rules if they so did that, and that's something that we would pay attention to. Hopefully that doesn't happen. But it's a, you know, Nicky D's is Autos by Joseph's son. We've never really had any problems with Nicky. He does a good job working for his father. He just has his own company now that he's promoting, and he applied on the list and complied with everything that needed to be done as per the rules and regulations. So I recommended it. Tommy, the building inspector Corcoran, went through it, and I believe he signed off on the application too to bring it forward to the board for your approval. That'll bring us back to seven.
But you don't have the volume you had before, but I mean, tell us.
Yeah, that's the smart. You've got eight people on the list, you go from the top. Somebody's busy, you go to the next one. It's a round robin list, meaning- Okay, oh, so you- We just keep round robbing.
And if one of the persons wants to rotate or down, it's ready to go.
Right, so we make, so it's a round robin list. What we do is we start wherever the list left off last time. That person gets a call. If that person's available, they come out for the tow. If they're not available, they don't come out for the tow. However, in the rules, there's, you can only decline so many times before we can take action. We have never really taken action because ninety-nine percent of the times, there's good excuses. There is a recent additional vacancy on the list as Pink's Towing has had some difficulties over the last several months. We've been very tolerant with his difficulties as he worked through them, and he's recently contacted us, and he's selling his tow truck and the towing business and no longer wishes to be on our list. So he has terminated with that.
But now, how long has it been? When we set the business?
Yeah, a while. Seven, eight, nine years ago now, maybe, ten years ago?
You'd be the first.
A while. Right. So adding Nicky D's brings us back to seven. Obviously, we have tow companies on there that hardly ever come out, at least one. Yeah, if it's, you know, during their business hours and they have help, they'll come out, otherwise they don't come out. The other tow companies all come out when we call, no matter what the weather is, what day and time it is, and they have a quick response.
There's only one company that can actually tow a big rig, and that's-
No longer in this town do we have a heavy duty tow. Right.
Ericsson, right?
Ericsson, we now call Ericsson.
All right, any other questions before we do the resolution? All right, let's go. Thank you, Jerry. Thank you. All right, so Resolution eighty-three to accept the application for a towing license. Supervisor Corcoran proposes the following. Whereas the Town of Marlboro Town Code, Chapter one forty, Tow Truck states that the Town Clerk shall accept applications for permits for persons desiring to tow in the Town of Marlboro, and whereas the Town Law, Section one forty point six, requires all applicants to be reviewed and approved before the Town Clerk can issue a permit. And Jerry did, and Tommy did, those are the two that have to approve it, and they approved it. Be it resolved that the application for Nicky D's towing be approved and moves for its adoption. Councilman Malinelli. Councilwoman Sessions.
Yes.
Councilman Couchy. Councilman Zambito.
Yes.
Supervisor Corcoran. Yes. Okay, so moved. And Eddie, it is eight oh six. And item number fifteen is all you.
I move for the adjournment of the meeting so you can go home and watch the football.
I need a second.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilman Couchy, and so moved. Good? All right, eight oh six, end of the meeting. Thank you.
You want to take this down or not?